Let's call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of July 27th is proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take those first few items.
Thank you.
First, we have Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director for the Iowa Park and Rec Association Conference in West Des Moines, Iowa, from September 29th through October 1st at an amount not to exceed $540. Item two, Abraham Funches, Executive Director of the Human Rights Commission, 2015 FHEO National Training and Policy Conference in Washington, DC, August 31st through September 9th at an amount not to exceed $1,925. And finally, we have Patrol Officer Saunders for the International Outlaw Motorcycle Gang Investigators Conference 2015 in Des Moines from September 13th through the 18th at an amount not to exceed $565.
Second.
Just to note, Mr. Schmidt, that's, it was September 4th, 2015, not September 9th. That'd be a really long conference, an item two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at item three when you were saying, my mistake.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
I would vote aye on one and two and no on three.
All right. We have pre-oths.
I'll take the pre-oths.
Thank you.
If that's okay. We have cultural and arts revised at $15,920 for replacement of the mural on the side of the parking ramp on Lafayette Street located between East Fourth and East Park Avenue. The revised amount reflects an increase. There is an attachment on that. Engineering, $7,945 plus $345 shipping for seven sets of, what is it?
Nina.
Nina.
Tree great.
Tree great R8740-1. And we have engineering, $5,703.75 for six pallets of Unistone bricks and six pallets of Hollandstone bricks plus pallet rental. Leisure services, $1,600. Supply and planting native prairie seed, Ektoski Green Belt. Leisure services, $1,740 for dram shop, liquor liability insurance. 9/7/15 to 9/6/16 for the Young Arena to serve beer and wine coolers. Also Sunday sales. Mayor, $2,500 for Cedar Valley Coalition 2015 membership dues, planning. $2,767 for a best of abatement for 1823 and 1827 Black Hawk Street. Sewer, $50,350 for Aztec. We apply roofing system with Blue Sky Solution for EdWorks Roof. Good question. And sewer, $3,950 plus $200 shipping for replacement of PLC and operator interface for thickener poly prep unit.
That sounds lovely as well.
Second those items?
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Could we have Kent just tell us a little bit about that wall mural, what the plans are?
Kent Schenkel, Cultural and Arts Director. As we've kind of discussed before, that mural on the side of the parking ramp over Lafayette Street is deteriorated. It's faded significantly. It's starting to tear and pull away from the framing. We got bids for replacing that, and it was our hope that we could just replace the graphic alone. It turns out that the framing that's used is obsolete and it's no longer supported. And so, the contractor that we were looking at advised that we change the frame as well. And in fact, they're really not willing to just change the graphic. The price that they gave would apply to changing out just the future graphic, assuming that we've replaced the frame. So that is kind of the, that represents the difference in the price there.
So when you get all done, what's it gonna look like?
It will look like it did originally. It will be much more vibrant and colorful. And it will be, with the new frame, it will be able to be adjusted so that the tauteness can be maintained. So it will have a longer lifespan than it did originally. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I noticed in the supporting documents that that only is gonna last a few years, a couple years. Is it really worth that much money to keep doing that?
It is, it would be about a $10,000 cost every five years. So that makes about $2,000 per year to maintain that mural. And it was discussed by Art Commission and our Public Art Committee, and they felt that that was probably worth it in light of the highly visible aspect of that and the fact that it really has become an icon of the community. It's listed on a number of websites as something to do and see when you come to the area and so forth.
Anyone else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move that we approve the budget line item amendments. Copies are in file in the Clerk's office. I also move that we pay the bills this week, which are $462,842.81.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Carolyn, could we ask Mr. Hudding just real quickly, Paul, on that item number seven? Is that something that was in the budget and that was the plan all along to get that money?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Item seven, which is, which item?
The hotel motel, $10,000 for marketing.
Oh, yes, that's, that's something that we did budget accordingly.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, and thank you for your time.
Hey, Paul.
All of you that are in our audience today, we have a great crowd in our audience, and welcome to those that might be watching on our public access television station also. This is the regularly scheduled meeting at the Waterloo City Council this Monday, August 3rd, 2015. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Good, thank you very much. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Pat Treeler, our Chief of Fire Services. Pat, please.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Be of seating.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of July 27th, regular session.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or corrections on the minutes or tonight's agenda? Almost. Favor. Sue the consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a proclamation tonight, a certificate of recognition, and a couple of other things. So, we're gonna start with a proclamation for the National Night Out. Is there someone here to accept that? Perry Goodman usually comes. Or would you like to come up? Are all of you guys are with the National Night Out group? Come on up, please. It's actually the National Association of Town Watch. I wasn't aware of that. Just come right through the, through the door there. Come on up, guys. Just come on up here. Just kind of, one of you get on one side and a couple on the other. There you go. I'm Buck. How are you? What's your name?
Brianna.
Brianna.
Erica.
Erica. Once you're here.
Steve Harvey.
Hi, Steve. Good to see you guys.
Yes.
Okay. This is a Waterloo, Waterloo, Iowa, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation for National Association of Town Watch. Whereas, the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 4th called National Night Out. And whereas, the 32nd Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Waterloo to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas, neighborhood associations play a vital role in assisting the Waterloo Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Waterloo and is supporting National Night Out 2015 locally. And whereas, it is essential that all citizens of the city of Waterloo be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of Waterloo. And whereas, police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Waterloo to join neighborhood associations and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 32nd Annual National Night Out on August 4th, 2015. That's tomorrow night, guys. Who, who wants to accept this?
President.
There you go, Brianna. Now, somebody's gotta say a little something. Is that, Brianna, is that you, or is that Steve?
That's Steve.
Okay. Steve's going, okay, just talk right into the mic, Steve. You gotta, right?
I'm Steve Harvey. I live at 610 Inglewood Avenue with my family. We started this neighborhood association with Brianna. We named it the Edison Association because of the Edison School that was there. A lot of people in that neighborhood have been there for 80-plus years, their families and such. So we wanted to kind of carry on that tradition. We just kind of wanna take our neighborhood back and make it good for kids, make it safe, make it fun. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Don't go away, since you guys are from the Edison neighborhood, I got that also. So hang on to the conversation. So the, the second thing that I have tonight is kind of in conjunction with the National Night Out. And by the way, that's a great program, and I bet wherever you guys live, somewhere around close, if not in your own neighborhood, you have a National Night Out program. We have them all over the city. It's a fun night. People come out and cook hot dogs and cook lots of stuff, and, and those of us that go around to them eat way too much, and it's a great night. But it's a really, it's a way to, to kind of get out in the neighborhood and to get to know people that you might not otherwise know. So it's a great program. So I hope that you do show up somewhere at a neighborhood National Night Out tomorrow night. And we are also here tonight to present a certificate of recognition presented to the Edison Neighborhood Association, which is a new neighborhood association. You know, we had a period of time back in the early 80s where we had a burst of neighborhood associations. And they were very active and got a lot of stuff done. And then they kind of died out. Neighborhood associations kind of faded away to some degree. Some stayed very active, but many of them kind of didn't. And now we've got a really resurgence of neighborhood associations. So we're really glad that you guys are one of two or three or four that's jumped up here lately, and we're just glad for that. So anyway, by the city of Waterloo, Iowa, on this third day of August 2015, in honor of your valuable and dedicated service to this community. So I'm gonna give this one to you, since Brianna got that other one. Guys, congratulations on both, on both of those. Okay, and finally, since it's the first week of the month, I want to recognize Laura Wolf as our August Team Member of the Month. Those of you that watch or come regularly know that once a month, we recognize an employee of the city of Waterloo as a Team Member of the Month. You know, they do a plethora of different things. Some of them do very heroic acts, and others just show up to work and are good employees. They have a smile on their face, and they contribute mightily to the team, which Laura Wolf absolutely qualifies for. She just does a fabulous job. She works in our waste treatment facility and is actually on the committee for the Team Member of the Month Committee. So it was a little difficult to try to get her nominated and get her, and we didn't surprise her, she knew it was coming. But anyway, congratulations, Laura. I hope you're watching, and you do a great job. Please keep it up. There we go.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
A move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B3. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, a move that we make our bills payment, which we read by our Finance Chair.
Thank you. The bills this week are $462,842.81.
Counsel, before you second that, I want to make a note on 1B2. The destination for Police Officer Sanders is actually not Des Moines. He's leaving from Des Moines, and he's going to Laughlin, Nevada. So just wanted to make that note.
It's a correction.
Second.
Okay. Are there comments on the consent agenda, Counsel, from anyone? Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, let's see, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote yes on everything except 1B, 1B, and I would vote no on that item.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. That motion passes. We are into resolutions. If somebody could take two, three, and four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
Item two, I move we adopt a resolution accepting the bid from Toder, Inc. for the purchase of nestable two-wheel garbage carts in the amount of $73,631. Three, another resolution approving application for traffic safety grant in the amount of $8,500 for traffic safety awareness online children traffic safety contest project. And four is a resolution approving an application for a traffic safety grant in the amount of $11,000 for a traffic safety awareness elementary school outreach program.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding two, three, or four? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Let's take the next four, please. Five, six, seven, and eight. Finish out the resolutions. Mr. Schmidt?
Item five is adopting a resolution approving an encroachment agreement with AGM LLC to allow for the construction of a parking lot 14 feet within the right-of-way located at 2864 Burton Avenue. Item six is adopting a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECOM for preliminary engineering and design for an estimated total cost of $78,600 in conjunction with the Midport Boulevard Extension Project Phase III. Item seven is adopting a resolution approving an agreement with Iowa DOT to revitalize Iowa's Sound Economy Program, or RISE, funding in conjunction with the Midport Boulevard Extension Project Phase III in the amount of $878,719, with a local match by the city in the amount of $194,719. Additional project costs totaling $106,270, $270 will be covered by the city. And item number eight is adopting a resolution authorizing an exception to the city of Waterloo purchasing procedures to approve the purchase of sewer equipment, including trucks, Gelvac trucks, jetter with camera in the amount of $2,125,915.18.
Second.
Counsel, questions or comments regarding any of those four? Five, six, seven, eight. Ms. Cole.
On item eight, I notice we have an exception to our purchasing procedures. Could we just have a 10-word summary on why?
Brian, can you do that in 10 words? Or is that a Bob Bamsey question? Bob?
10 words is a challenge, Carolyn, but suffice it to say that one of the things we need to do under our C-MOM program is increase our capabilities to clean and TV the sanitary and storm sewer systems. And this is the equipment, training, and software we need to do that. And it's, it's to be purchased through the National Joint Powers Alliance. So this has already been bid to them, so to speak, and the prices are fixed through that group. And we're merely saying, rather than take the time to go off for bid and that sort of thing, this is our recommendation on how to do it.
We have, to follow up on, on what Mr. Bamsey said, Carolyn, we have also approved through our attorneys in Des Moines that it is appropriate for us to do this, that we are not violating any kind of a tenant in far as our bid policy. That we're okay with that. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Hart. So, Bob, is this a third set of cameras? Because we just, within, I think, the last six months, bought a second truck with cameras, or is this a different kind of camera?
Yes. It's a different, it's a completely different kind of camera. It's much more advanced. And what it does, Steve, is it takes the two that we have and upgrades those with the new cameras. It provides us also a new truck with a completely new camera. And these are, these are, this is called the Q's system, all right? And they are the vendors for this. And it's a 360-degree shot as it goes down through the pipe. And then it also includes a software package which virtually it, I don't want to say it analyzes itself, but it certainly expedites the review that's needed to be done to classify the system. So it'll be much more efficient. It also includes two new combination units to clean the sewer, jet it, and vac, and suck it out. And then it, and the third major item is a separate jet truck with TV capability that we'll use for troubleshooting.
Thank you.
Further?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lynn?
The supporting documents said this was sewer funds.
Yes.
Do we have enough money in the sewer? We must have enough money for sewer funds.
Michelle isn't here, but I'm assuming we do.
We're not bonding for those.
No, no, no. This, no, this is sewer fund. Good question, though. Anything further? All in favor? I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please, on those four.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
You're at the motions carry. Item nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time in adopting an ordinance amending number 5079 as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property for a request of Iowa and Heartland Habitat for Humanity for a site plan amendment to the R1RP Plan, One and Two Family Residence District for the purpose of constructing 14 new single-family homes located at the former Irving Elementary School at the corner of Hawthorne Avenue and West Sixth Street.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hart. The hearing on this was held two weeks ago, but I did allow last week, if there was anyone that wanted to add additional comments, even though there was no hearing held last week, to do so last week, so I will this week. If there's anyone here that wants to speak, either, and for, either in favor or opposed to the Habitat for Humanity Family Residence District, the microphone is over, open. I'll give you an opportunity to speak if you'd like.
David Drive, 3145 West Fourth Street. I guess, my question is, what's the difference between item two on the consent agenda, A2, and number nine ordinance?
Well, David, I don't know. Let me look and see what was two.
Seems to me like about the same thing.
Oh, no, it's, they're not, actually. What we're doing now is approving the zoning. We're changing the zoning for the project. And item number two is setting a date of hearing for the development agreement. Two totally different things.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item number nine? Madam Clerk, roll a call vote, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Motion carries. Ally and team, congratulations. This is a, this is an exciting new project for you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we had a very short meeting tonight, some important stuff, but that is the, the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. So it is time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the mayor and counsel, now is the time to do so. Just come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Pat, Bruce, are you coming up? Pat, do you want to try to get the microphone down to Bruce, please? If you just kind of bend it down quite a ways, he can get to it. What's that, sir? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Bruce? Oh, yeah, right, right.
Yes, thank you. Bruce, 304, 514 East Second Street, Waterloo. I was calling to come up here to say thank you for allowing me to be part of the process to keep our government working fine. Hope and pray that I can add my input, make it accessible for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bruce, thank you very much. Your, your input is always appreciated, and I've spoken to our engineer several times about your, the AD compliant ramp request and so forth. We're working, it's gonna take us a while to get all of those done. And we're also going to address the snow issue in the wintertime, to try to get those ramps cleared sooner for folks like yourself that need some help getting out there. So we're, we're going to address those.
Remember, I just said I'm just disabled, unable.
Bruce said he's disabled, not unable. That's correct.
No, thanks to Christ's strength in me, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Jim J, 224 Berge. First of all, I want to congratulate Waterloo on the success of the Irish Fest this weekend. I think we had more people than we ever had. My question is, is any of the proceeds from that going to go into the fund that helps set up the barricades, the cleanup, and the overtime for the placement?
No.
No?
No. Well, I spoke too quickly, Jim. The Irish Fest Committee hires two police officers, so that helps pay for those two police officers that are hired by the Irish Fest to patrol the grounds.
Okay, how about the cleanup?
No. That's, no.
We just absorbed that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Forrest Dillawu, 1725 Huntington Road. In Sunday's papers, Conagra's expansion was explained, stating that basically $300,000 of city taxpayer money will be going in there to help them. They will be getting 57 new jobs. That is wonderful, absolutely wonderful. We need them in Waterloo. And it did mention that it was in a TIP, which means tax dollars will not help pay for police, fire, snow removal, or any of the other things that are funded with the general fund. For, you'll have to tell me the years, 20 or 30 years, whatever. But across the page is a Martin Brothers' expansion in Cedar Falls. And in there, the first year, they will pay 25% of the taxes will go back into, it sounded first year, they will pay 25% of the taxes will go back into, it sounded like, the general fund. The second year will be 15% more, or 40%, until that was all exhausted. And then they would be paying the full load on taxes. They, through the time when some of them were exempted, they will still pay $843,000. And as one, it's all done, they'll pay $306,000 per year on the expansion, which will go into their general fund. And I think that will probably help their homeowners. We do not help our homeowners in this city until we can do something about giving everything away, buying and giving away repeatedly, time after time after time. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
Mayor.
Noel, sure, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Just a note, the Martin Brothers' project is in the Cedar Falls TIF district, so it will go into their TIF district.
Okay. Very good. Yes, sir?
David Drier, 3145 West Fourth Street. I guess one of my questions is, well, my question is, which side of the river is the whitewater thing going on?
It's gonna go on the north side, the east side. Yeah.
Okay, good. Because I like to fish on the west side, south side. I call it south side. And then, just a comment, I was down recycling yesterday after I got back from my vacation mowing, and the grinder is gone. And we still don't see any sifter there.
Yeah, yeah. Grinder's not gone. It's just parked in the back of the joint down there. It's got a clutch that's burned out of it. We're waiting for a part.
It's broke?
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn to executive session.
Second. Very good. Let's do one thing, Counsel. And I'm sorry, this is kind of, I'm gonna take five minutes of a personal privilege here just to point out a couple of things. So, I hope you'll bear with me for that. You know, we have, certainly, we have challenges in the city occasionally. But I wanted, just in the last four weeks, we have had so many just really good things happen to the city that I wanted to kinda take time and point them out to folks. It started on July 24th, when Waterloo was notified that our Chief Financial Officer, Michelle Wiedner, won an award from the Government Financial Office, Government Finance Officers Association, for her excellence in working with the Waterloo budget. It says, "By an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program." So, Ms. Wiedner has won this award before, but it's just an indication that we are doing things right in the finance office. We have a very competent person in there that rubs her two nickels together when she spends them. And she's recognized for doing a great job with that. And then, on Friday, July 31st, we got a, just a really heartwarming, I don't know, this was, this was just a really cool email from a fellow by the name of Tom Little, Thomas L. Little, Professor Emeritus of UNI. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but he describes himself as a 72-year-old former resident of the Cedar Valley and a UNI professor for 30 years. Now lives in Charleston, South Carolina, but he's evidently an old skater, huh, Paul? Because he takes, and a lengthy email, he tells a story about how he used to live here and he used to do a lot of skating in the adult skating leagues and so forth. And when he travels around the country, he always takes his skating gear with him.
Hockey.
And he's hockey, he's a hockey player, not a figure skater kinda guy. He's a hockey player. But he makes a comparison, he tells about how he's traveled literally around the country. And every time he goes somewhere, he makes it a point to find an ice arena and he goes, shoots some pucks. He plays a little hockey. And a very lengthy email congratulating the staff on the email. Oh, I'm out, sorry, I'm out of time. I gotta stop. I'm gonna read this slowly. Saying, "Considering all of the operational variables mentioned and arenas visited, I must say that Young Arena right here in Waterloo is absolutely at the top of what I have encountered, considering both on and off ice practices and conditions. Between the super well-kept, highly manicured sheet of ice, to the, all the off-ice facilities, none others around the country top the quality of the way that Young Arena is operated. Great praise must go to Chris Dolan, Joel Scheres, and Jake Schafers and the entire Young Arena staff for Young Arena." Just out of the blue, didn't have to do that. Just took his own time to send us a letter about Young Arena. Maybe some of you saw it in Sunday's paper and yesterday's paper, a truly heartwarming letter that was written by Cheryl Smith. Cheryl Smith moved to Waterloo from the Las Vegas area and became the director of the Waterloo Cedar Falls Board of Realtors. And then had some real personal tragedy that befelt her very soon after she moved here. She had the opportunity, when she moved here, to live in Cedar Falls. She chose to live in Waterloo on the river in one of the apartments downtown. And she tells of the tragedy that befelt her. But she also took time out of her schedule to just send this editorial to the courier. Says, "My heart will always recall the friendly, caring people of Waterloo who reached out to me. In the dismal cold of January, February, March, they made sure I had friends and I was not alone. The peace garden, where I could stop and say a prayer, was so important, along with the sound of the trains, the church bells, the Friday loos in the park, music by the river, the community theater, the hockey team, the festivals, the museums, the history, the great food and local restaurants, and the great diversity of this community. I loved it all. When you walk the streets of Waterloo, you get to say hello. As you pass by and feel a connectivity to the community, it is a wonderful community with rich history. My one regret is I did not get to stay longer, but I know a part of me will always be there. Please don't let the naysayers ever say Waterloo is not a great place to live. My days there were short, but my memories will remain with me for a lifetime." Two very unsolicited letters about Waterloo from people who have shared our community. And just today, we received notice from the Iowa League of Cities that Waterloo has been named one of three, out of 945 cities, one of three All-Star communities. And we will be recognized at the annual League of Cities Conference in September, which I urge all of you to come and join in the celebration of Waterloo being named an All-Star community for 2015. So, ladies and gentlemen, we don't get it all right every single time. We make some mistakes. We try not to make many, but we have got 530-some employers that work for the City of Waterloo that show up every single day with the objective of giving you guys everything, nothing but the best. We have 20-some department heads that manage this city that try their best every single day to do the right thing by each one of you and all the citizens of our community. And I couldn't be prouder to have this position at this time and all of these comings in in such a short time. I just felt like I had to say something. So,
Thank you.
Thanks to all of you. Thanks to all of you. Okay. Now then, there is a motion on the floor and a second that we adjourn to executive session. Mr. Zollerfer, are we doing so under proper authority?
Yes, we are pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.51J to discuss the purchase of real estate.
Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Thank all of you. We are adjourning to executive session.